Better and I, I know I'm a better officer, deputy investigator because of him. And uh, I'll always be grateful for that and. His imprint will go forward with me, I, I believe as I. Investigate, I'll always think of John and what, what standards he required. So I'm thankful for that and like, heard said, greatly missed.
I'll say I knew John from the business side, not the criminal side. And uh, yeah, he was a, he was a plethora of knowledge when it came to county business. And he, yeah, so we missed.
I will say that John had a very brilliant legal mind. And, and knowledge and expertise and ability to, to know, that was known near and far from here. Under his leadership with his team, he did, they did a great job of prosecution for the county. I, I was told that by many times from different county officials that I've known throughout the years. Uh, through the years though, through phone calls or visits. That should have only lasted maybe five minutes or so, turned into a half hour or longer. I realized that John and I both had uh, an admiration for each other in our roles in county government. Although we did not always see eye to eye on everything, um, that's the way it was. John was very proud of becoming the president of ISAC, even though for such a short time. Uh, I know I was, was on the board at one time when he was on the board in ISAC and he was very proud of that position to hold. Um, rest in peace, John.
I've known John for thirty, call him a friend for thirty-five plus years, uh, when our, our daughter was young and took, took dance with his, with Renee. And uh, that like he is very, very good mentor to me. And uh, I've also seen, seen the compassionate side of him too. He's very compassionate for, for people. He, you may be. If he might have taken to trial, but if he sees something good in your person, he would, he would, he was a good guy, very compassionate and that spent some, he will be missed, so.
I, I didn't, I didn't know John that long, but um, like Scott says, he was a walking encyclopedia. Um, the guy was very intelligent. And uh, I, I will miss his uh. When he would go off on Republican meetings, when they'd give him the floor, he'd, you know, a two-minute deal would turn into a twenty-minute hurrah about stuff and it's. He was just intelligent. He knew a lot of things, so he'll be missed. Thank you.
I miss his wittiness. I mean, John and I, we may not have seen eye to eye on some things and he would put me in my meetings really quickly. But he was a plethora of knowledge and we'd be able to have that open communication. Um, I sure hope, he's. You will never be able to fill John's shoes. Nobody ever will be able to fill John's shoes, because those are big shoes to fill. I think we have plenty of. Um, he instilled plenty of knowledge in people that may be going forward and I know he loved his staff. And he loved his children and his grandbabies. He never not talked about his grandbabies, so. Rest in peace, John, and thank you for the many years of service to Carroll County. The dedication was, is amazing.
Anybody else? All right, it's nine oh nine, let's call a meeting order. Looking for approval of the agenda and I would like to add a point five before item one. This will be regarding a resolution for the appointment of the assistant county attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Approval of minutes from Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes of March tenth, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Point five, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh oh seven, appointment of assistant county attorney. Think we all have a copy of this. Courtney, do you have anything to say?
Um, other than, this should have been handled, um, probably after the election in twenty twenty-two, um. I think it was clear to everybody on the board. That he, um, that Kurt Steiger was the assistant county attorney. If this is just, in my opinion, a formality.
So I'll go ahead and read it. Um, resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh oh seven, Carroll County. Order, resolution of the board of supervisors, appointment of assistant county attorney. Whereas, the Carroll County attorney was duly elected November eighth, twenty twenty-two and took office. Both of office on January third, twenty twenty-three for a four-year term beginning on January second, twenty twenty-three and whereas. Per three thirty-one dot three oh nine of the code of Iowa, each officer may appoint one or more deputies, assistants or clerks. For who, whose acts and the principal officer is responsible. And approval of each appointment shall be adopted by resolution and recorded in the minutes of the board. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Carroll County Board of Supervisors that the following appointments by the attorney are approved. Kurt S. Steiger, Assistant County Attorney, approved this day seventeenth of March, twenty twenty-five. So I'm looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh oh seven.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second, roll call please, Courtney.
Anderson?
Yes.
Houseman? Yes. Johnson?
Yes.
Miners?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number one, secondary roads, review and approve utility permit. That you've got a pretty big one here, Olson, on behalf of Mid-American Energy.
Yes. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Courtney.
So this utility permit is for Mid-American getting fiber to um, various places uh, in Carroll County. Some of these um, are, do fall within the state right away, which is not. Right, the permit obviously, but there are a few sections um, that. Do fall under, in our secondary roads, Carroll County Secondary Road right away, so. Nothing new on installation process on this, um, um. Bowing and boring the necessary locations um, with driveways, culvert pipes, things like that. Um.
Do you have, get a more detailed map? That it's zoomed in more.
Yeah, this thing is.
So.
I try to zoom in.
Central Iowa, yeah, I couldn't get it to.
About seventy pages, so I wasn't able to send it.
But is it, um.
So.
And why, does Mid-American usually do fiber?
They, they do for communication purposes.
So this is for their own purpose, though, right?
For their own. I, I was gonna say, why isn't it Western Iowa Network?
No, it's fiber for their own communication purpose.
Where they gonna fit it?
Depends on the section of road. Um, you know, one, one section is going south out of Arcadia. It parallels along Highway thirty for a little bit and then runs down the OCO. To a point where, I'm not sure what the connection point is, where they're going, about, oh roughly, seven or eight miles south of Highway thirty. That's one stretch. Another stretch is east of Templeton, uh, over to Highway seventy-one where the substation is.
So they go clear up to Templeton then?
Well, it looks like it's, it's stopping right, it's stopping just in the northeast corner, so they must be tying into something there, so.
Well, first I looked at this, I thought maybe they were stopping at this building out here.
Out there, no, either going all the way.
No, not this, this one.
Oh, right, okay. No, they're, they're going all the way to the substation, that's what they're showing there. And then the other stretch is basically going from Willie, east to seventy-one, bounce to south. And then uh, cuts across over to Willie, basically.
So do they sub this out or do it themselves?
Uh, they'll, they'll, I'm, I'm almost positive they'll sub this out.
So this stretch here is going to someplace too, but was that going to Willie?
That's going, going to Willie, so.
But it goes over to Roseell then, or Helber?
Uh-huh.
It was west too, though.
Let me double check.
Roseell, man.
Roseell.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is.
I, I know, print it out in color for me, I still didn't, I apologize for that, but I, I can leave this here, you can do, look at it more if you'd like to look at it, but that was the.
If you reviewed it in your staff.
So, Bill Paul's uh, driven all these routes and looked at them, um. Don't see any issues with what they're trying to accomplish, uh, nothing different than the norm for as far as how. We would ask contractors to install fiber.
The vaults are putting up back on the right away lines then?
Yes, I think, I think they are, where they're tying in, um. Sometimes we'll allow them to be more in the bottom of the ditch or the forest slope, depending if it's a short run or going around an intersection or something like that. But generally, we try to keep them in the back.
So everything's pretty standard.
It's pretty standard, um, it's another one of those where. We'll, we'll kind of field fit it as well, once we find out where other utilities are, because that's the other, other issue that we have is. Like Mike said, where are you gonna find room for things, so.
So you're looking for approval for, um, Mid-American Energy and. Twenty twenty-five dash one, is that the way you sequence some utility?
Correct, yeah, this will be the first utility permit for a twenty point five calendar year.
Everything look good, Hugh?
It did.
I'll make a motion to approve the utility permit.
We have a motion. We have two seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you. Excuse me. Second item is uh, reviewing uh, equipment for, for a. Snowplow truck chassis, or two, I should say. Um, got this uh, proposal from uh, Houseby for two Mack chassis. Um, these are basically identical to what we've purchased here a few years ago. Um, there's really not been any changes to the. Um. Really to any part of that chassis, um, drive chain engine, all that stuff is, is the same, um, some very. Minor cosmetic changes like on the grill and maybe a little bit in the interior, but other than that, there, it's very, very, very similar. Um.
And you're happy with these? You like the Mack?
Yeah, they, they've, they've served us well, um. The, the nice thing about these is, we would have, we would have eight trucks that'd be the same, um, I'll call it model. So there'd be a lot of interchangeable parts and very, our mechanics would be very familiar with them. Um, so that, that's a big part of it, um.
How many, how many trucks do you have now? Roughly.
Probably fourteen or fifteen.
And eight of them.
But there's a couple of them that we're, we're gonna be getting rid of this summer that are beyond their useful life. Um, so, ti- ten is what we really run for, from a, a snowplow out standpoint. And we always try to have a couple extras in case we have breakdowns for, um, make sure we're, we're able to cover that territory.
But eight of them would be the same then roughly?
Eight of them would be the same, same model per se.
So is the sticker shot gone from the last couple of years? Um, or is this, this where you were budgeting or planning on roughly?
I was planning for this, this is, this was about where I was thinking they, where they'd come in, maybe, maybe a smidge less than what I was budgeting for. Um, the, we locked in the, the last four that we bought. Right before there was some steel increases and we got a, directly right, right after that, some pricing went up. I think it's kind of leveled off a little bit now. I mean, obviously, these are higher than what we bought them for three years ago. Um, but uh, I think it is leveling off a little bit. Uh, we'll see what happens in the future and there's obviously a lot of things that. At stake there as well, so.
How much more are these up, do you think?
Um, give me a second. Double check my numbers. Uh, roughly twenty-two thousand higher than it was three years ago.
And this is just the chassis?
This is this chest, just.
So outfit the truck totally, what is it gonna be additionally on this? I think that's always something that reportedly add on.
I'm wanting to. Yep, um, I'm still working through, working through those numbers.
Estimate numbers.
Roughly, I'd say.
Close to a hundred?
What?
Close to a hundred?
Um, yeah, maybe a little less than that. It's, it's, it's up there.
Well, I'm just making the point, you know, we look at it a hundred and fifty-three, four thousand. Well, it's close to two hundred and fifty thousand.
It's, it's getting, it's approaching that.
Delivery date, you're okay with?
Yep, um, from what they're, what they're telling me is they're, i- it's something that could be. Built and ready as early as July, um, but for sure in the fiscal year. Or, or, this could be for this new fiscal year. And it could be as, as late as the, like, beginning of the fourth quarter, which would be, you know, that September timeframe, so. But that would still fit in with what we were, we were trying to accomplish. My goal is built to have these and have all the equipment to be able to build these over next winter, would be the id- ideal between.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve two Mack trucks.
Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Back to Gene's comment, how much is it to each one to outfit them?
Just less than a hundred thousand.
Per truck?
Roughly, and now, per truck.
That's box, sander, plow.
Yeah.
Hydraulics.
Hydraulic lines and stuff, yeah.
I'm sure. And then they, they put.
Bow and wing, um.
So we can reuse any of the old ones, do you reuse any of that stuff, the old one?
It's pretty much shot. I mean, the stuff we're getting rid of is roughly twenty years old.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not even, I'll say it's not compatible, but it's a different, some of our different systems, even what we're using.
Okay.
Um, like the, some of the, like the wing, plow, we will, we will keep those as spares or parts type thing.
Yeah, because they're probably worth nothing now, right? Yeah.
They're not.
Well, they've got a lot, probably a lot of salt wear on them, that's what's.
I mean, a lot of, I mean, like, as far as the hydraulic system, a lot of that, some, some of that's even been replaced.
Absolutely, yeah.
And it's, what have you.
What, uh. Have, do you, once these get approved or denied, do you, then do you go get the quotes for the boxes and stuff?
I.
You have them ready?
I have some already, but I'm, I'm still trying to work out some of, some of the details on those. I don't have final numbers and that's why I. I was gonna wait, but I didn't want to hold off on getting these, these chassis coming, I guess, is my, my goal, I guess. But uh, I'm hoping, hopeful within the next couple of weeks, I'll have. Numbers on the equipment as well, so we can get that procured and get that coming as well, so hopefully be ready for.
What?
Late summer, early, early fall of working on this stuff.
More questions? So we're looking for a motion to approve two Mack trucks, a hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars each. Or three hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and forty total.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second, any more discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. See department update.
Uh, last thing, just to kind of give an update on construction a little bit, um, we did have our pre-con for our asphalt projects on Friday. Um, tentatively, they're planning to start April seventh with their milling operation. Um, we'll see how, will be a little bit in flux, depending on what weather does and how things go here over the next three weeks.
So, um, will they, you know, which section they're gonna do first?
It's still up in the air a little bit. It'll be more than, it'll be more than likely one of the northern uh, sections, either.
One fortieth or one fifty?
Either E twenty-six east or E twenty-six west, um, one of those two. And they'll kind of keep bouncing around, um, they'll more than likely mill. All of them and then start their base widening process and then start putting the surface down.
So you think by the end of, perhaps the end of April, they might be done?
Oh, it'd, it'd take them a little longer than that, would be my guess. I don't have that, their schedule with me, but I would believe.
I was thinking for newspaper and radio, is it gonna be a four-week, I mean, it's weather dependent, but.
Four to six weeks, I'm, I'm gonna throw in there, but it all depends on, you know, when they get started and, and what the process might be for. The weather and, and uh, base widening and what have you.
It's nice, at least you can communicate with them now.
It'll be, it'll obviously be open to traffic, you know, it'd be flag your pilot car situation, there won't be a closed road situation while we're doing these, so. Um, this be a little slowdown and, and.
It's good news. Anything or any more questions for Zach?
Excited for the storm this week.
Yeah, what's happened Wednesday?
Yeah, I don't know that the, 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 snow is, and then it had, well, I guess, but uh, the wind, I guess, isn't, that's the. Wild card always, so.
Nothing really in November, December, January, and then here comes mid-February and March. Guess the only good thing is, is you know it's gonna melt.
Yeah.
So. Okay.
Just never know what, where in the mornings, do you wear summer clothes, do you wear winter?
I know.
It might change.
Yeah.
The day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have number two, set public hearing. For a construction permit, Jason Opperman, section twenty-nine, Washington Township. So, this is a, a existing confinement and it's three miles north of Manning. And I believe the address is eleven, four ninety-nine, two hundred and seventieth, which is between Birch and Concord. And I did reach out to um, the DNR, because in my service on the board, we've never updated our master matrix. So I asked, I would like to do the site visit with them, as some of us may. And I got this response, good morning Scott, there was a, this facility was originally constructed in two thousand fifteen, at which time a site survey was conducted. Because there will be no new construction and just an increase in animal units, I was not planning on conducting another night, another site survey. However, if you have questions specifically regarding this matrix, I can sure schedule a survey anyway. Or you can ask me specific questions you have via email or phone, what would you prefer? So I'm looking for direction from the board, would anybody like to do a site survey? If there's no construction, it's just increasing the animal head count.
You're just gonna have a little more manure coming out, correct? Is that what there's?
I.
Is what I've assumed.
I was on the original.
I didn't want to bring that up because it was ten years ago, Gene. You get, you get offended when I bring up things in the.
There was a thing that I questioned at that time and then. I'll tell it off the record.
But so, should we request, should I respond that we're okay with it, or should I ask her?
You know, it's not gonna be any change to the building or anything. Normally, when you go out slight.
I think.
You, you check.
She is though.
Uh-huh.
No.
There's no change.
Just a head count from nineteen hundred and twenty animals to forty-eight hundred.
So you're doubling, more than, more than doubling.
But is it a finishing operation now and they're gonna become a, I don't know?
That, uh. That's a change in. There's no, there's no construction?
No changes constructed.
So then why is it a construction permit application?
They have to do that when they change what they originally filed for so many animal units. So now they're changing up in that animal unit. They're gonna run them through quicker or what? I don't know, or difference bringing.
I'm new to it, that was why, that was why I reset.
Here's the thing they could do. Mike, is they could be bringing in bigger animals and run them through quicker. That's why the numbers are going up. I, I don't know, but, but there's not, on this type of deal. And we've had these before, but there's no additional construction.
How do, how do we know that?
They tell us that, and they tell DNR that, and that, we're getting this from DNR.
That was the emails I got, I can forward you, are shoot to the DNR and from.
Yeah, and there's no construction on it.
That's what she's saying. There will be no new construction, just an increase in animal units. I was not planning on conducting another site survey.
And there shouldn't be any, I mean, there'd be a lot more manure, but the manure is not gonna be a runoff, so it's just more or less, they're gonna just fall more away and, and.
Right.
Spread it on farm ground.
I'm like, Mike, I was curious, I wanted to go see, because I've always heard about during the two-mile, the master matrix, help protect and. It's never been, Courtney, do you know when the last time it was updated?
Probably the one Gene was talking about.
Two thousand fifteen, so it's been ten years.
Yeah.
Gene and I went to one where they constructed a fence, when that new technology came out about defencing, you and I were at that.
Well, we did one over to.
One, one, four, nine, nine, two, seventieth.
Dean.
Got it. Three miles straight north of.
Neil Bach was there, yeah.
Uh, normally when we'd, we'd go out to a site of new construction, we'd, we'd always get a map from. GIS on where the wells are located and what water sources are close to it. So you basically go out and just verify that they are, got the right distances from houses, water sources. Public, uh, public, uh. Facilities, and that's what we do.
But the DNR runs the master matrix, correct? We have no say on that.
All we can do is we check the master matrix and make it sure it comes out, yes.
So it's just like.
And the thing is, master matrix, as far as I'm concerned, is like going to a restaurant, looking at a menu, and you pick what you want. And I always question why they never went over so many points. They only get as many points as they need to get that passed. And the response I got back is they, once they pick those points, they're stuck with that. Those points that holds time that building's in use. So they never want to go above and beyond that, because then they have to maintain more issues after that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because I always thought, why didn't they add, add, get more points than they could have got it, you know?
Maybe we should go out and look at it, I'm not supposed to go out looking at it, but uh.
I can schedule a site visit with her if you guys, that's what, I'm waiting for direction from you. I mean, we still, we're gonna set a public hearing for um, nine o'clock on March thirty.
Yeah, I think the public hearing we need to do.
But uh. You what, Mike?
I don't want to go look at it. I can see everything, I need to see.
It's black and white, pretty well black, set like and white, what's going on here, so.
I'll respond that we're okay.
You, you're more of a look at, but you can see everything online.
Set context?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess I'm looking for a motion to set a public hearing for nine o'clock on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five in the boardroom of Carroll County Courthouse.
So moved.
So I got. We have a motion and a second, set a public hearing for the construction permit of. Application of Jason Opperman, section twenty-nine, Washington Township, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. And I will reach out to her, that, go ahead and do your thing. Item three, manure management, denter finisher, section twenty-seven and thirty-four, Pleasant Valley Township, annual update. Heinrich pork, section thirty, Roselle Township, annual update. Twin Rivers Pork, section twenty-two, Arcadia Township, change crop rotation for optimum yield, use manure analysis. Item four, committee report.
I can go first. Um. Monday after the, at noon, uh, Scott and I met with the Carroll Rotary and did the um, annual um. Went through the budget and what's going on with the county and what projects we had. And then on Tuesday, majority of us was at Farm Bureau to, to do the same thing. I thought both those went very well, um. And then on Tuesday night, went to the Carroll County Roundtable and then did that site um, visit on that Bitcoin. Um, and then Wednesday night, I did attend the ISAC Legislative Reception in Des Moines, which was very well attended, uh. I was, uh, but, but our two representatives were, were not there, but I did visit some other ones, so instead. Uh, Thursday and Friday, I was at ISAC. And then this week I got, uh, Tuesday, CCGP. Wednesday, uh, a funeral, I'm assuming, and also I have in the afternoon, I got Rolling Hills Mental, uh. Health Board Meeting, and that is gonna be a very interesting one, because we will be going through the process. Of trying to do a transition plan for closeout on Rolling Hills. Which.
Will this be your last meeting before?
No, this is not gonna be the last meeting. It's supposed to be this van, end of June, but the twenty-eighty agreement may have to be in place until. After an audit is done on the final wrap-up. So that may be.
Financial.
Maybe till, not till, end of next year. Uh, and then Friday, I have Y S Center Board Meeting up at Cherokee.
I can go. Last week, like Gene said, Tuesday, we attended the Farm Bureau Meeting, very, very informative for me, this was the first one I've attended. And then Wednesday, or Thursday and Friday, we went to the ISAC. Meeting, which was very informative again for me, again, like I'm, I'm newbie here, so I'm learning a lot of things and, and I forgot, then on Tuesday also. I attended the roundtable in Coon Rapids on the Bitcoin. Uh, this week, Mike and I had a conference call this morning with Renee. On the union negotiations and then uh, tonight, I've got Carroll area childcare committee meeting, so it's all I have on my agenda for this meeting.
I'm next. Last week, Gene and I did the Carroll Rotary Lunch-In. And discussed road projects for the year, upcoming year and budget. Um, five fifteen, I went to Carroll City Council Meeting. Tuesday was lunch-in with the Carroll County Farm Bureau, which has been covered. Um, I also reached out to the master, or to the DNR about the master matrix visit. And city-county roundtable toured the Bitcoin mining sites, and I think six cities were there out of the thirteen, which was good. Um, Wednesday, I worked with Sarah to finalize two parcels. Along the SOC rail trail that the county purchased for Morehouse back in two thousand eighteen for a thousand bucks, but the deed was never transferred to Carroll County. I think that's completed now, Courtney?
Yes.
Um. Thursday, rough start to the morning for all of us, many, I had a bunch of phone calls with county officials and ISAC staff. Also gave statements to the Daily Times, Herald and Carroll Broadcasting, asked Dalton to send out a email. Notification to all the county employees. Um, did do, um, the afternoon sessions at ISAC, and I thought, uh. Um, TIF one oh one was very valuable, and then they did the House File seven eighteen budgeting. Friday was supervisors joint session with uh, most disciplines of county government. They had somebody speak from the assessor, conservation, EMA, environmental health, P and Z, public health, veterans affairs, conservation. Um. And then Friday, I, I did talk with uh. Clark Nelson from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I spoke at length with Kurt Steiger about the state of the county attorney's office. Um, this week I have newspaper radio today. Tomorrow, six thirty, executive meeting at the Carroll County Recycling Center, CCGP at noon. Um, attend the funeral, or the wake for John Warden, Wednesday is the funeral for John, County Attorney John Warden. Thursday will be secondary roads claims and Friday will be courthouse claims.
I can go next. I can go next. Last week, I had newspaper radio, and I attended the Carroll County Roundtable, and just like everybody else, toured the Bitcoin. And Ken Roberts, and then I attended ISAC, and like Scott said, Thursday morning was. Very. Sad morning, and very busy, um. This week, I have no formal. Meetings, but I will be attending the, excuse me, the wake for. The late county attorney and also the. Funeral on Thursday.
Um, last week, I had conservation. Um, on Monday, Tuesday, went to Farm Bureau. Tuesday night, went to the County Roundtable. Uh, this morning, we had ambulance, uh, negotiation meeting. Um, Wednesday, I'm supposed to have Watershed Management Coalition in Oakland, but I'm. Mostly gonna miss that for the funeral, and that is it.
Any comments from those internecks? Courtney, what do we have for next week? Building?
Yep, um, so, we at nine o'clock have our proposed property tax levy. So next Monday, we'll kind of have two board meetings. Two agendas, so at nine o'clock, we'll do the proposed property tax levy, um. We'll close that meeting. And then we will have, uh, set the budget hearing. For the fiscal twenty-six budget. Trying to read what. Oh, I'm sorry. We also have a public hearing at nine thirty for the Dick and Marcy Warnamott petition. Like, that's what it is.